Four o'clock and I will call the February 1st, 2021 Salina City Commission meeting to order and we'll begin by confirming with staff that the Kansas Open Meeting Act required notice has been provided.
Yes, it has.
Thank you very much. With that, we will proceed with roll call.
Mayor Hodges?
Here.
Commissioner Davis?
Here.
Commissioner Frans?
Here.
Commissioner Hoppeck?
Uh-oh.
He's muted.
There now, can you hear me? Here.
Yes. Yes.
Commissioner Ryan?
Here.
All right. Despite the siren, if you will join me, please, for a moment of silence. Thank you. We'll move into awards and proclamations.
Item 3.1, "The Month of February 2021 as Black History Month in the City of Salina." Sandra Beverly will read the proclamation.
Good afternoon, everyone. I have brought along two people with me, my grandchildren, Gabriel and Scarlett, because I think they needed to be here to hear this. The proclamation as reads, "Whereas during the month of February, we honor the men, women, and children who fought for freedom, equality, and living the pursuit of happiness. We celebrate Black History Month to show our gratitude to those like Harriet Tubman, who was one of many that risked her life to free slaves through the Underground Railroad. We recognize the lost souls that were killed or imprisoned fighting for the right for black children to go to school with white children, for blacks to have the right to vote, for Jesse Owens to become the first African American to win four gold medals at the 1936 Olympic Games in Berlin, Germany. And whereas even today, the black community has had to rise up and fight for their voices to be heard, they are fighting for the souls who were murdered, they are showing young generations how to be proud of their skin color. The black community is showing the invisible chains that are still on them and how they are finally breaking the shackles off, and they're saying, no more injustice, no more black men, women, or children being killed, no more silence. Whereas there is no longer a responsibility, it is a duty to show the inequalities, the injustices would still go on to this day. It is a time for us to unite and rise up to the black community to secure their birthright and secure our birthright to freedom. As we mark the 45th Year of Black History Month, let us reflect on all that occurred this past year in 2020. Let us remember the sacrifices made by people of different colors and different generations to unite and march with the black community. Let us remember how they were shot with tear gas in their faces, but they still kept going. They kept marching forward until one day, I Have a Dream will no longer be just a historical speech, but it will be the life black people and others finally achieve. Now therefore, I'm Melissa Rose Hodges, Mayor of the City of Salina, do hereby proclaim the month of February 2021 Black History Month and urge that every citizen of Salina join me in celebrating the diversity and individual character of each one of our neighbors by recognizing that a fundamental strength of our community is based on the diversity among us. In witness thereof, I hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Salina, Kansas, to be affixed this day, February 1st, 2021. Melissa Rose Hodges, Honorable Mayor, City of Salina."
Thank you very much, Ms. Beverly. I really appreciate you getting the proclamation done. This is so very important. I know that 2021 has presented more challenges still with doing things virtually. Are there any events or things that you would like to share with the community?
The national theme for Black History Month this year is the black family, representation, identity, and diversity. And that's part of the reason I wanted my grandchildren behind me while we were doing this, because I would have brought them to the building to see this because of that. Everything is happening virtually. We just had our NAACP State Meeting this last weekend, and that was virtually, it's a whole new world and we're getting used to it, but I hope we get back to some semblance of what we had before. I also have for each of the commissioners a calendar, and it's from the Equal Justice Initiative, and that is the organization that is helping myself. There's a group here in Salina called the Dana Adams Project, and we are trying to get things in line so that we can have a marker here in Salina. Our target date is February 2022 to have an installation of a marker in remembrance of Dana Adams, who was lynched in Celine County. So those are some of the things that I do know about. I know churches are putting on different programs. I would just encourage everyone to remember to practice grace, remember we're all human, and to look at each other as human first and colored second.
Wow. Thank you, Ms. Beverly, and thank you for your work on behalf of Dana Adams, because I only learned about Mr. Adams two or three years ago when I was on the commission. And if it hadn't been for people bringing this to our attention, it's lost to history, and it's so important not to lose that. So thank you to Scarlett, and I'm sorry I missed your grandson's name.
Gabriel.
Scarlett and Gabriel, thank you so much for being here today, and thank you all for the important work that you're doing. Thanks, Sandy. It's good to see you.
Hope to see you all soon in person. Thanks.
Yes, thank you. All right.
We're done. Now you can act crazy. You were on TV.
I thought she was talking to us, and I was like, not quite yet, not quite yet. All right, we haven't, we had another proclamation added to the agenda, is that right?
That's correct. Item 3.2, "The Month of February 2021 as Teen Dating Violence Awareness Month in the City of Salina." Kaitlin Butts will read the proclamation.
Hi, everyone. I'll just get right to it. Teen Dating Violence Awareness Month Proclamation. Whereas one in three adolescent in the United States is a victim of physical, emotional, or verbal abuse from a dating partner, a figure that far exceeds victimization rates for other types of violence affecting youth. Whereas females between the ages of 16 and 24 are most vulnerable to intimate partner and sexual violence, experiencing abuse at a rate almost triple the national average. And whereas high school students who experience physical violence in a dating relationship are more likely to use drugs and alcohol, are at greater risk of suicide, and are much more likely to carry patterns of abuse into future relationships. And whereas young people victimized by dating partner are more likely to engage in risky sexual behavior and unhealthy dieting behaviors, and the experience may disrupt normal development of self-esteem and body image. Whereas nearly half of teens who experience dating violence report that incidents of abuse took place in a school building or on school grounds. Whereas only 33% of teens who are in an abusive relationship ever tell anyone about the abuse. And 81% of parents surveyed either believe teen dating violence is not an issue, or admit they don't, do not know if it is one. And whereas by providing young people, parents, and professionals with education about healthy relationships, warning signs of abuse, and relationship skills, and by changing attitudes that support violence, we recognize that dating violence can be prevented. And whereas the Domestic Violence Association of Central Kansas needs all of Salina to work toward ending teen dating violence by empowering young people to develop healthier relationships, assisting victims in assessing the information and supportive services they need, creating better and more resources for young people in need, instituting effective intervention and prevention policies in schools, and engaging in discussions with family members and peers to promote awareness and prevention of the quiet epidemic of teen dating violence. Now therefore, the City of Salina Board of Commissioners hereby designates February 2021 as Teen Dating Violence Awareness Month, and urges citizens to recognize and assist all those who serve the rights and needs of victims of teen dating violence.
Thank you very much, Butts. Does D-VAC or are there any other sponsors in the community that have events, virtual or otherwise, going on to talk about teen dating violence?
Right. We specifically, well, I'll start as a whole nation, like, the Respect Week for teen dating violence is February 8th through the 14th, and the theme of the whole month actually is Know Your Worth. And then there's like a Wear Orange Day, which is Tuesday, February 9th, to like draw attention to the issue. And then specifically at D-VAC, we're doing a Teen Dating Violence 1-on-1, 101, presentation. And that, you can get all the links through our Facebook, and that will be February 25th at 11:00 a.m. And that has like the Zoom link on there, and you can sign up through there. And then as well as all month, I'll be posting just stats and just general information on all of our social media pages, so.
Great. Thank you very, thank you very much. I'm glad that you're able to get all of those things coordinated and out there at a time where it's really difficult to do that, and we'll, so we'll be looking to your Facebook page for, especially on February 25th, when you have.
At 11:00 a.m., yeah.
At 11:00.
And there's this, there's the signup, and there's, we also have LinkedIn member right out, but yeah, so we'll do a Zoom training for that, so.
Perfect. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
All right, before we get to Citizens Forum, I had asked City Manager Mike Skregg to begin updating us very quickly on the stats and the trends in the community where coronavirus is concerned from the previous week.
Sure. The data that I have is going to compare the, what was reported Friday of last week to Friday of the week prior. The county puts out information on Mondays, but I think that's probably happening simultaneously. So in terms of new cases, they reported 196 new cases, which is 50 less than they reported a week prior. Active cases were reported as 1,789, which is 66 less than the week prior. Total recoveries are at 3,637. That's 256 additional recoveries since the week prior. Hospitalizations were at 22, which is three more than, than a week ago, which was at 19. And then total deaths, total deaths are at 92, which represents six additional deaths in the past week.
Thank you. I mean, it's, it's, it's great to hear about the number of cases going down, and just as a reminder to folks who are watching, you can get on Celine County's website and sign up both for updates, three times a week, updates Monday, Wednesday, and Friday with the most recent coronavirus information, and Tuesday, Thursday vaccination updates, and we are in phase two of our vaccinations, so hopefully those will proceed quickly. That brings us to Citizens Forum. Is there any member of the public who would like to speak on an item that is not on today's agenda?
And Mike Skregg, or Mayor, if I may, we probably need to call on one.
Yes, sorry, instructions.
Yes, both that, and then I'll touch on executive session, how I'll handle that since we have one on the agenda as well.
Thank you. Okay. So. Sorry. I'm trying to screen share, and I'm not the host, so.
I can make you host if you want.
Yes, that would probably be ideal. What I will say while Brad is doing that is if you are phoning in rather than going through the app or going through the Zoom website, you will need to hit star nine if you are called in and you would like to raise your hand to comment during the meeting. I will note too, Meta Mayor, just if some of these issues have a lot of folks and you ask a meeting moderator to call on people, they need a minute to slide through that. We're learning for larger meetings, there's a lot of people to keep an eye out for. With that, screen sharing. Brad, it doesn't seem to be working. So I will walk through this, because this is not my day for technology. So what you will find is in the lower part of your screen, if you are in the actual website, you will see an icon that says Participants. It's got two little people. If you click on that, you can see who's in the meeting. If you highlight yourself, you will pop up and it will show a little yellow hand, and you can indicate you want to speak during the meeting. That will highlight it for the host, knowing that you need to speak. At that point, the mayor will identify you, once she calls for comments, and we will go through hand by hand. Your hand will be unclicked, once your comments are taken, indicating that your comment has been taken. There is a chat feature, so if you have questions during the meeting, you can see that under More. That's indicated with the three little dots that are in that same menu bar that are either at the bottom of your screen, if you're using the app on your web browser, if you're in the app on either your phone or an iPad, that bar may appear in the upper right-hand corner. That bar also has other features where you can raise your hand and chat, as I mentioned. So the key is, look for your menu bar, either look for the participant icon, or look for the three dots that are there to access either of those. And like I said, if you called in, you can raise your hand by hitting star nine.
And if I could add on, with respect to executive session, the call, we kind of refer to it as the call, but the Zoom meeting will remain in place. If you're a member of the public, a side room will be created where the individuals that are going into the executive session will receive an invitation from the host, and they'll go into a side room. The meeting will stay active. You can stay on the line. You don't need to do anything in terms of getting off and dialing back in. Once the executive session is concluded, the participants in the executive session will return to that main meeting and will pick up where we left off. So it's very similar to the approach that we had applied physically. Everyone can stay put. Those in the executive session will leave and go to an alternate meeting. When that's done, they'll conclude and return back to the group that's standing by. So if you're a member of the public, essentially, you really don't need to do anything other than stay on the line and stand by as the executive session is happening elsewhere.
Thank you, Mr. Skregg and Ms. Driscoll. And the only other thing that I, that I have to add is, in the event that you can't find the buttons that we were referring to in order to virtually raise your hand, if all else fails, turn on your camera and physically raise your hand so that we can recognize you. And now that we've got that piece of business out of the way, are there any citizens that would like to virtually or physically raise their hand and/or hit star nine if you're calling in to make comments on any item not on today's agenda? I don't see anyone. Can I confirm that with staff that?
As Commissioner Hodges, or Mayor Hodges, I do not have anybody who's expressed an interest at this time.
Thank you very much, Mr. Anderson, and thank you for helping us out with our technology needs today, too. That will bring us to public hearings and items scheduled for a certain time, which we don't have any. That takes us to the consent agenda.
Item 6.1, approve the minutes of January 25, 2021. Item 6.2, Resolution Number 21-7934, concluding the 2020 evaluation of the city manager's performance. Item 6.3, consider Resolution Number 21-7931, authorizing and providing for the replacement of four rooftop HVAC units in Great Plains Manufacturing Convention Hall, and relocation of HVAC controls for these units to connect to the main floor control system at Tony's Pizza Event Center, and authorizing the issuance of temporary notes and/or general obligation bonds of the city to pay the cost thereof. Item 6.4, consider Resolution Number 21-7932, authorizing and providing for the replacement of portable basketball floors at Tony's Pizza Event Center, and authorizing the issuance of temporary notes and/or general obligation bonds of the city to pay the cost thereof.
Thank you. Are there any items on the consent agenda that a commissioner would like to have removed for discussion?
Commissioner Davis, 6.2.
Thank you. We'll remove item 6.2. Anyone else?
Commissioner Ryan, Mayor, I would move, we approve the 6.1, 6.3, and 6.4 as presented.
Commissioner Davis, second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve consent agenda items 6.1, 6.3, and 6.4. May I have a roll call?
Commissioner Davis?
Aye.
Commissioner Frans?
Aye.
Commissioner Hoppeck?
Aye.
Commissioner Ryan?
Aye.
Mayor Hodges?
Aye. And that motion passes 5-0, which will bring us back to item 6.2. And I would like to thank Commissioner Vice Mayor Davis for pulling this off the agenda. If it's all right with you, Commissioner Davis, I would like to read the resolution.
That, that was all I was going to ask you to do. Your voice would be very appropriate.
Right, thank you. All right. I wanted to read, we just, first of all, to give this some context, we, the City Commission annually reviews the city manager's job performance, and we have just completed that annual evaluation. And normally, we take action if there's an adjustment to the city manager's pay or benefits or anything like that. And this year, despite an outstanding performance evaluation, City Manager Mike Skregg opted not to accept a raise or a bonus because of, you know, wanting to lead by example and acknowledge that employees throughout our organization weren't going to be receiving, you know, the same benefit that he would. So I want to thank him also for his leadership in, in making that decision. And something that is becoming increasingly apparent to me, both in the previous study session and in reflecting upon this resolution and Mr. Skregg's performance evaluation, we talk a lot in our organization about rightsizing. And generally, that means cutting back, reassignment, staff taking on more responsibility. But I hope that as we work on strategic planning in the months ahead, and as our organization moves forward, we also take the time to acknowledge that right, sometimes rightsizing means admitting that maybe we need more help in a certain area. And sometimes those areas are very easy to see when it's not having parks mode consistently over the summer. And sometimes it's, it's things that are more difficult to see when it's like in Development Services or the city manager's office, and we're, we're trying to get a lot of initiatives done with not a lot of staff. So hopefully, that's a conversation we can continue into 2021 and beyond about what rightsizing within our organization truly means. At any rate, off the soapbox, here's Resolution Number 21-7934. "A Resolution Concluding the 2020 Evaluation of the City Manager's Performance. Be it resolved by the governing body of the City of Salina, Kansas, whereas the governing body has completed its 2020 performance evaluation for City Manager Michael D. Skregg. And whereas the year 2020 presented unparalleled challenges for the City of Salina and its citizens, from the human and financial toll of a deadly pandemic to long-deferred community conversations about race and policing. And whereas Michael D. Skregg demonstrated dedicated service to the City of Salina by ensuring that city employees were kept whole financially, while protecting the city's financial position during COVID-19, facilitating the development of a new citizen review board for the Salina Police Department, concluding settlement negotiations with the United States government for shilling Air Force-based groundwater remediation, working with Celine County to finalize the Expo Center lease and a new emergency radio communication system, and coordinating incentive packages to secure major business expansions for Shawn's global supply chain and Great Plains manufacturing. And whereas such service and dedication to his job and the interests of the City of Salina are worthy of public recognition, even while Mr. Skregg declined to accept a raise or a bonus. So now therefore, be it resolved by the governing body of the City of Salina, Kansas. Section 1, that an official expression of gratitude and appreciation should be extended to Michael D. Skregg for his dedication and faithful service for the City of Salina, Kansas during challenging times. Section 2, that the city clerk is hereby directed to have this resolution delivered to Michael D. Skregg, adopted by the Board of Commissioners and signed this first day of February 2021. Michael L. Hoppeck, 2020 Mayor, and Melissa Rose Hodges, 2021 Mayor." Commissioner Hoppeck directed the evaluation process and did a great job, and I think we're set up for consistent evaluations in the future. And then the final thing I'd like to note is, Mr. Bankston noted that it is Happy Birthday Salina Day, or at least Happy Birthday Salina City Manager Day, because 100 years ago today, the citizens of Salina, Kansas voted to adopt the city manager form of government. So it's appropriate that we're recognizing Mr. Skregg today, as well as celebrating 100 years of professional city management. And with that, I'm done talking. Is there, is there anyone else that has anything to add?
Commissioner Hoppeck here. Again, I think you said it very well. We were fortunate to have Mr. Skregg as our leader during 2020, and the city financially is much better off than we were to start, which I'm not sure how many other communities, not only the state of Kansas, but around the United States can say that, so thank you. Thanks not only to Mike, but for, to the staff for their, their work during a trying time. And with that, I would move that we approve item 6.2, being Resolution Number 21-7934.
We have a motion and a second to accept Resolution Number 21-7934. Could I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Davis?
Aye.
Commissioner Frans?
Aye.
Commissioner Hoppeck?
Aye.
Commissioner Ryan?
Aye.
Mayor Hodges?
Aye. That motion passes 5-0. Thank you very much, Mr. Skregg.
If I may, I thank you. I appreciate it. I'm honored to serve, and none of what you described happened on, I didn't do any of that alone, which in part is one of the reasons that I declined a raise or a bonus, recognizing that there are a ton of people in this organization that helped contribute to that success. And this is, this is my 2020 evaluation. None of those employees were eligible for a merit increase because of our budget, and so didn't, didn't think it was appropriate for, for me to be treated any differently. The other thing that, that I think today might actually highlight just a little bit in terms of how our organization steps up, for those that aren't aware, the Deputy City Manager Jacob Wood was serving as our host for these Zoom meetings. He's deployed for Army Reserve Training, so Lauren Driscoll stepped up. Well, then she has a needy presentation to make today, so Brad Anderson steps up. Our city clerk position, the city clerk took another opportunity in the organization, glad to keep her in the organization. So the Deputy City Clerk steps up. Well, she's out sick today, so Debbie Pack steps up. It's just, and then. steps up. Well, she's out sick today, so Debbie Pack steps up. It's just an example of how we function. And as we went through this year, we certainly put in a lot more hours than a typical year, and, and everybody in their function pulled in the same direction without, without questioning it. They saw the need for the organization, they saw the need for the community, and I'm just thankful that, to, to be able to lead the organization that we do have. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Skreg. With that, we'll move on to site, item seven point one.
Item seven point one, second reading ordinance number twenty one dash one one zero five zero, amending the future land use map of the Salina, Kansas Comprehensive Plan to change the future land use designation of property located on Cortland Circle, south of Shilling Road, and west of South Ohio Street, from future employment to future neighborhood center, and amending the text of the narrative describing the neighborhood center land use category of the Salina Comprehensive Plan to add C five and P C five to the list of potential zoning districts under the neighborhood center land use category.
Thank you. Mayor Hodges, ordinance number twenty one dash one one zero five zero was passed on first reading on January twenty fifth, two thousand and twenty one. Since that time, no comments have been received. Do any commissioners have questions or comments about this item? Are there any members of the public who would like to speak? And we'll give this a few seconds. Actually, not see, I don't, I think there's maybe only one or two citizens on. With that, I'll bring it back to the commission for action.
Commissioner Hoppick here. I move that we approve on second reading ordinance number two one dash one one zero five zero.
Commissioner Ryan, second.
We have a motion and ex- and a second to pass ordinance number twenty one dash one one zero five zero on second reading. Could we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Davis?
Aye.
Commissioner Franz?
Aye.
Commissioner Hoppick?
Aye.
Commissioner Ryan?
Aye.
Mayor Hodges?
Aye. That motion passes five zero.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Item seven point two.
Item seven two point two, second reading ordinance number twenty one dash one one zero five one, changing the zoning district classification from P C six, planned heavy commercial, to P C five, planned service commercial for the property that is legally described as lots one through five, block four, and lots one through four, block five, in the corrective plat of Liberty Edition number two, in addition to the city of Salina, Saline County, Kansas.
Ordinance number twenty one dash one one zero five one was passed on first reading on January twenty fifth, two thousand and twenty one. Since that time, no comments have been received. Are there any comments or questions from the commission? Any comments or questions from the public? I'm assuming that's, that's no.
Seeing any indication of interest from the public to speak on this item.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. With that, I'll bring it back to the commission for action.
Commissioner Ryan, mayor, I move we approve on second reading ordinance number twenty one dash one one oh five one.
Commissioner, second.
We have a motion and a second to pass ordinance number twenty one dash one one zero five one on second reading. Could we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Davis?
Aye.
Commissioner Franz?
Aye.
Commissioner Hoppick?
Aye.
Commissioner Ryan?
Aye.
Mayor Hodges?
Aye. The motion passes five zero. Which takes us to item seven point three.
Item seven point three, resolution number twenty one dash seven nine three five, authorizing the mayor to enter into a lease with the Saline County Fair Association.
Mr. S- Mr. Skreg?
Yes, Mike Skreg here. Thank you, mayor and commissioners. I am confident that you are well aware that our lease with Saline County for the rodeo arena and grounds expired at the end of two thousand and twenty. That was the, the result of the negotiated arrangement for renewable lease. With that expiration, responsibility for those grounds reverted back to the city. We had previously discussed that, and you as a governing body had indicated that you did not wish to assume responsibility for improving the buildings in sight for the continued use for, as a rodeo grounds. In fact, we discussed the likely possibility that we would be financially responsible for demolition in sight, just grading in preparation to return that to a greenfield site if nothing else. Along the, the, that same timeline as we were negotiating with Saline County, we were approached by a group of volunteers calling themselves Salina Net Generations, indicating an interest to redevelop that site, as well as the Kenwood Pool Site to, into a tennis complex. And those discussions are ongoing. And then as the lease was transitioned, the Saline County Fair Association reached out and inquired about the possibility of leasing the rodeo arena and grounds in that intervening time, recognizing that there was kind of a short-term transition possible and recognizing the city's intent to ultimately clear the site. And so staff has been actively negotiating a short-term lease with a representative of the Saline County Fair Association to transfer full responsibility and liability to the, the fair association, acknowledging the city's intent to demolish the structures and clear the site, and then also balancing the timing of, of the fair for two thousand and twenty one, and the possibility that Salina Net Generations will be back to you and would like to proceed as, as early as yet this year. So then, as all that kind of transitioned, we also had more recent inquiries from citizens about whether the city would entertain continuing using the location as a dog park. Saline County had, had operated it as a dog park while it was under their lease. That discontinued when the lease expired. And so I communicated with the individual citizens that had inquired that the staff's recommendation prior to that inquiry was, and it continues to be, that we enter into a, the, first and foremost, we enter into a lease with the Saline County Fair Association that fully transfers responsibility for the facility, that a hybrid use involving multiple parties and differing uses and scheduling would be, not only represent some liability, but would just be impractical. And so the lease that's before you defers to the Saline County Fair Association in terms of them having discretion to operate it as a dog park if they so choose. The lease has been negotiated with the fair association. They've confirmed it's acceptable, and it does provide that they can sublease the facilities for other, and this is wording that we came up with trying to identify that, that just reinforced the temporary nature of all this. So they can sublease it for other one-time, non-repetitive uses conducted by the fair association or its subleases prior to the two thousand and twenty one fair. And then I would note that Equifest has inquired of me directly, and I've referred them to the representative of the fair association, of the possibility of using the facility for their event in March. With respect to finances and costs, there's no direct fiscal expense to the city as it relates to this lease item. We have had conversations previously about the estimated cost of demolishing the rodeo arena and accessory structures, and that estimate is seventy-five thousand dollars. And then the estimate for the Kenwood Pool Site, for the pool, not necessarily the pool building, is an additional one hundred and six thousand dollars. Those costs are not attributable to acting on this lease, nor are they directly attributable to the proposed tennis complex. Those are, assuming that neither one of those happened, and we accepted responsibility for those. Those would be independent costs that we would have to address at some point. With respect to your possible actions, we have identified the typical lineup of approval, amending, postponing, or taking no action, which would result in denial. I do want to acknowledge that, that Mayor Hodges pointed out this morning, rightfully so, that the way that the lease is currently written, it, it's not entirely clear about the fair association's discretion with respect to being able to operate it as a dog park. And, and as I've said, we, this is all set up to defer to the fair association. I don't want to convey their intent in any way other than the fact that they acknowledged it and said they'd take it under advisement. But the two proposed amendments that would, would clarify that are within the recitals. Recital D, the insertion of a new letter C that reads continued use of the arena stage area as a dog park at the discretion of the SCFA, and then renumbering what was C to D, that would continue to read removal of the Saline County Fair Association's personal property from their arena facilities after the two thousand and twenty one fair. And additionally, section four point one, authorized uses would need the same amendment, insertion of a new C to read continued use of the arena staging area as a dog park at the discretion of the SCFA, and then relettering C to D, and it continuing to read removal of the personal property and dirt owned by the SCFA from the arena facilities after the two thousand and twenty one fair. So staff's recommendation would be that you enter in, that you approve the lease with the proposed amendments that I just described. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Commissioner Davis, one question. If for whatever reason, the tennis project were to proceed much sooner than expected, is there a minimum amount of notification that has to be given to the fair board that could be terminated early?
Well, actually, we, we discussed that with representatives of Salina Net Generation, and we recki- the, the conversation we had was we could proceed with demolition of the pool site, the Kenwood Pool Site. And so it seemed likely that even if we were able to get things moving, we could phase it, phase the work in such a way that they could be working at the pool site while the fair is going on, and then they could transition to the rodeo grounds once the fair is completed and moved out. So I have to commend Salina Net Generations. They've been eminently reasonable in, in all these conversations, and were helpful in finding a balance.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Is there anyone from the public who has a question or a comment about the lease?
Mayor Hodges, I'm not seeing any indication of people wanting to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. With that, I'll bring it back to the commission for further discussion or action.
Oh, I'm sorry. Just one, Commissioner Davis, one other question. If this is, is approved, is there going to be a way to reach the fair board for citizens to inquire of them about using the area as a dog park?
Yes, I, I, well, I've had that conversation with the representative. I don't want to prematurely offer up someone and have them be inundated, but I'll coordinate with them in terms of, you know, point of contact. And I, I have maintained the contact information for the citizens that reached out to me, so I can relay that directly to them.
Okay, thank you.
That's per- that's Mayor Hodges, that's perfect. That'd be, that would be good information for them to have. Anyone else?
Are you ready for a motion?
Anybody want to take a stab at this with the amendments?
Mayor, or Commissioner Hoppick here. I move that we approve resolution number two one dash seven nine three five with the previously, previously mentioned amendments.
Commissioner Ryan, second.
We have a motion and a second to approve resolution number twenty one dash seven nine three five with amendments as presented by city manager Mike Skreg. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Sorry, sorry, sorry. We track, we're doing the roll call again.
Commissioner Davis?
Aye.
Commissioner Franz?
Aye.
Commissioner Hoppick?
Aye.
Commissioner Ryan?
Aye.
Mayor Hodges?
Aye. That motion passes five zero. Before we go into executive session, is, does any i- does any commissioner have another item to be addressed under other business? All right. Hearing none, we have a request for an executive session. And Mr. Skreg, you thought it would be about forty-five minutes?
That is my best guess. I always am reluctant to guess long and, and have too much time, but I think forty-five minutes is my best guess.
All right, thank you.
Getting better. That's exactly what I thought you were gonna say. I started even penciling it in. Mayor, I move the city commission recess into executive session for forty-five minutes to discuss with legal counsel the subject of legal considerations relating to defense of the case of William Shepherd and Cornerstone Development Group LLC versus city of Salina and city of Salina Planning Commission, based upon the need for consultation with an attorney for the public body, which would be deemed privileged in the attorney client relationship pursuant to KSA seventy-five dash four three one nine B two. The open meeting will resume via the same Zoom link and the city of Salina YouTube channel at five thirty P M. Obviously, I have a second.
We have a motion and a second to recess into executive session for forty-five minutes, resuming at, I'm sorry, did you say five thirty?
Five thirty.
Five thirty. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Davis?
Aye.
Commissioner Franz?
Aye.
Commissioner Hoppick?
Aye.
Commissioner Ryan?
Aye.
Mayor Hodges?
Hi. We will adjourn into our break room, and we will resume the meeting in this Zoom location at five thirty.
And, and Mayor Hodges, Mike Skreg here. You have a couple of housekeeping items. For those that are, the, the public that are on the call, you need to do nothing. You can quit, and we'll return. If you, we should lose you, or you should lose us for some reason, we're using the same link, so you can just log back into the same link. And then for the host that's facilitating this breakout session, obviously, it will be all the, the commissioners, myself, Greg Bankston, the city attorney, Jake Peterson, also with Clark Meis in Linville, Lauren Driscoll, and Dean Andrew, if he's on the line as support staff. So five commissioners, two attorneys, two staff, and a city manager.
I've got that, Mike. Lauren, I may need a hand here. I'm not seeing the button to create the breakout room anymore. I pulled down on all of the menu items, and that option is no longer there. So give me just a second, and you'll get an invitation to come into that room.
We have one more. Clock went to five thirty, and we're back. We're back live, resuming our meeting. There was a note that possible action was to follow after the executive session. There is no action that'll be taken at tonight's meeting. And with that, I guess I'd accept a motion to adjourn.
Commissioner Hoppick here. I move we adjourn.
Second. Commissioner Ryan?
Motion and a second to adjourn the meeting. And I can do the roll call on this, because this is the last one, and I don't want to make Debbie do it. Commissioner Davis?
Aye.
Commissioner Franz?
Aye.
Commissioner Hoppick?
Aye.
Commissioner Ryan?
Aye.
And myself, aye. Motion passes five zero, and we will see you on the eighth of February next week. Thank you.
Bye, all. Have a good week.
Thank you.
You too.
You too.